A motion to enter into executive session. One, pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 3, to consider strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to the DPW, police, fire, and other areas, and negotiations with non-union staff, fire chief, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board. Number two, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate, land at Zero Frankland Road, such as map U seven, block seven, lot zero, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board. Number three, to approve executive session minutes from July 6, 2021, to allow, number four, to allow Norm Kamalu and Elaine Lazarus to participate in the executive session, and number five, to reconvene in open section at the conclusion of the executive session. So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
For executive session, it has to be roll call, right?
A roll call vote.
Okay, so, roll call vote, then. Ms. Ritter-Bush?
Ms. Ritter-Bush, yes.
Ted Stone, yes.
Ted Stone, yes.
Lefrenia, yes.
Mira Crunger, yes.
Okay, thank you very much, we will be back. Before we begin, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, in the fiscal liberty and justice of our
All right, so item number one is the public forum. Please note that each person will have up to two minutes to speak at public forum, and please start by stating your name and address. Recognizing that there may be people at the meeting in person and participating remotely who would like to speak, we'll go to the room first. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak at public forum? Okay, seeing none. Ben, is there anyone? No? All right. So consent agenda. The board will consider approving the consent agenda consisting of approval of the minutes of the July 6 and July 12, 2021 meetings. Number two, accepting a $1,000 gift to the police department from the Hopkinton Cricket Club. And number three, accepting the resignation of Rory Warren from the Board of Appeals. Board members, would any of you like to break any of the items out for a separate vote?
Not I.
Okay, and then...
I'd like to make a comment on Rory. I think we should accept his resignation, but we should do it with regrets and thanks for his service to the town.
Well said. In which case, then, I request a motion.
Additional comments, just to thank the Cricket Club for their generous donation of $1,000. That's really a nice large sum, it's very much appreciated.
Mr. Chair, I just want to remind all the board members that in this setting, we have a couple board members that don't hear as well in this environment, so if we can all speak up, it will help.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
I'll try to speak up.
Yeah, you're all set for it.
In which case, I request a motion to approve the consent agenda thanking the Hopkinton Cricket Club for the $1,000 gift and accepting the resignation of Rory Williams with deep regret. So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Next item is appointments, Newtown employees. The board will consider confirming the following town manager appointments of Newtown employees. Simone Carter as the public health nurse, Shivani Raval as procurement and grants manager, Donald Jazarowski as custodian, and Julia Snyderman as outreach coordinator. Ms. Kamalu?
Yes, through the chair. With your permission, may I invite Simone Carter to the front?
Come on up. You're the next contestant.
Yes, good evening, Simone.
Good evening.
It has been a great pleasure for the towns' interview panels to meet and discuss your experience and very strong interest in joining the town of Hopkinton. I would like to share with the community, as well as with the board, that this is what we heard from you. You have worked as part of the Natick Walpole Visiting Nurses Association, as a community health nurse for two years, as well as a telehealth coordinator for two years. You also worked in Louisiana for Endocrine One LLC as a telehealth coordinator, as well as you worked as a staff registered nurse for Terrebonne General Medical Center, also in Louisiana, for three years. During the interview, we confirmed that you hold a bachelor's degree in nursing. The references that we spoke to confirmed what we already heard during the interview, that you are compassionate, you have the ability to adapt very quickly, which is what we have experienced here in Hopkinton over the last two years relative to public health issues that have come up. We also confirmed your ability to cope with stress. In addition, we heard that you pay attention to details and that that comes along with the care that you always provide to your patients, and also spectacularly that you are a true professional. For the board's knowledge, for the board's information, Simone will be replacing Casey Mora. This is not a new position. She will be, as delegated by the town manager, reporting to the Health Services Director. The first round interview panel consisted of the outreach coordinator, Kim Kerson, the deputy fire chief, Bill Miller, the Health Services Director, Sean McAuliffe, the HR Director, Maria Casey. And then the second round interview panel was Amy Beck. It included Amy Beck, Elaine Lazarus, Chief Slemmen, Sean McAuliffe, as well as Maria Casey.
Sorry. Fantastic. Simone, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Hi, I'm Simone Carter. I moved to the area about six and a half, seven years ago now. Initially, I was able to stay home when my children were younger. And then when they, when my youngest got to go to second grade, that's when I went back to community health nursing. I worked for the Natick VNA. I'm sure you guys are familiar with the VNA. Did telehealth there. Mainly, they recruited me because of my critical care experience in the past. And I did their diabetic outreach program at the Callahan Senior Center in Framingham. And then, a couple, three years ago now, the VNA merged with the Walpole VNA. And at that time, my, they needed me more in a community health role. So I case managed lots of cases, got to work with towns all across the board, because we always have challenging home care patients, as you know. And then most recently, I guess about, what, 17, 18 months ago, they tapped me to help our public health department. We cover, on a contract basis, different towns. And we worked all through the pandemic, contact tracing, setting up vaccination clinics, working with the schools, doing the first responder clinics. We even outsourced, we helped do some clinics out of town even, as needed. So it's, it was my first taste of official public health. And I have to say, I enjoyed it, which was surprising to me, given the times. But I felt like it was a wonderful chance to meet people where they were, to have open conversations, to provide education and hope and resources. And I look forward to doing that now, here in this town that I now call home.
Well, thank you. I think we're really happy to have you here. And the fact that you enjoyed the work during the pandemic speaks, speaks very loudly. Board members, do you have anything, any questions or comments? I know we have a nurse here, so...
I was actually going to ask you about your outreach experience, but I think you've already answered that question when you introduced yourself, so I think I'm all set.
I just want to say that we're really appreciative. Casey did a beautiful job while she was working for us, and we really miss her. And we're really excited to have you stepping in. So we wish you good luck, and I hope that you also let your fellow staff members and board members know if you need support or help.
Thank you so much. I know I have big shoes to fill, but I look forward to the new challenges ahead. Thank you.
I just want to say that I've had lots to do with the Natick Visiting Nurses Association when my mother was around. And it's all been very successful and been very satisfied with all their work and their developments, although we never ran into each other, I remember you. And the other thing I want to say was, what made you choose Hopkinton? Is it just because the position opened up? Or what, why did you choose to buy in Hopkinton?
To live here? Or... Well, I was... I feel like there's a little bit of a, this is going to sound a little corny, but I have a little bit of a calling. I think most folks who go into these types of healthcare scenarios do. You don't, you do it because you feel called to it. And I live here. I have a sense of ownership and community, not ownership in the sense that I take pride in where I live. And I was so amazed at the statewide response and how well everything was coordinated and how each town worked together. I mean, some better than others. As you refer to, I, I'm from Louisiana originally, so we don't have such a robust public health system. And to be a part of that working in such a wonderful way, and then seeing the way the towns interacted, it felt like a natural fit. And when I saw the position open up, I felt like it was the next right thing to do.
Thank you.
So I'm the nurse on the board.
Save the best for last.
Yeah, second to last. So Casey did a great job. Casey, I'm the director of nurses at Marion Morse. And during this pandemic, I worked in lockstep with Casey. I called her anytime I had a question. She was, she was awesome. I look forward to kind of forging that same relationship with you.
Absolutely.
And you're right. When you become a nurse, there are certain sections that you, that you kind of thrive in. And if you told me 15 years ago that I would absolutely love my job working in geriatrics, I would say that you're insane. You need to be sectioned, which is not a bad thing. But it's a calling, and the fact that you've identified, you know, you're not a new grad and you're coming out and you're seeing that community nursing is, is the way to make more money. It's, you've been a nurse for a while and you know what your calling is and what you like to do and where you migrated to. And I think that we're fortunate that you're not just somebody that has identified their calling and wants to come work in our community. You happen to live here, so I think that that's great. So assuming that everything goes well, I welcome you to Hopkinton and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
I don't have much to add. I think, as I said, the fact that you've been working during this pandemic and loved it, that speaks volumes. So I say welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Should we do the motion for everyone all at once or individually?
Maybe more efficient doing everybody at once at the end.
Okay.
That means you have to stash.
Yep.
Thank you.
Go in the waiting room, please.
Ms. Kamalu?
Mr. Chair, respectfully, I present Shivani Raval. And with your permission, ask her to come to the front.
Hello, everyone.
Yes, hello, Shivani. Shivani.
By way of introduction, Shivani, in fact, is replacing Ben Sweeney, pending your affirmation of the town manager's recommendation. This is not a new position. She's going to be the procurement and grants manager in the accounting division. She has worked for six years with Fidelix Lighting as the director of operations. Intelligent Technical Services, one year as a business manager. And Nielsen, seven years as a financial research analyst. She has a bachelor's degree in accounting, as well as an MBA. During the interview, as well as when we spoke with her references, they confirmed her analytical skills, that she's detail oriented, very driven and thorough, works well under pressure, maintaining composure in very difficult situations. And especially with regard to her assignment here in Hopkinton, if she's affirmed, that she's a tough negotiator. And she does this whilst being able to maintain focus on her role and responsibilities to the organizations, while building strong relationships with whoever she's interacting with, which is very important for her role. The first round interview panelists were Ben Sweeney, Chief Slemmen, Dave Daltorio, John Westerling, and Christian Merrill. The second round interview panel included Ben Sweeney, Deputy Bill Miller, the former library director, Heather Beckman, CFO, Tim O'Leary, and the HR Director, Maria Casey.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome, Shivani. It's good to have you here. You know, you've got some pretty big shoes to fill. You know, Ben's, Ben's been doing great for us, so why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
So I'm thrilled to be here. This is my first time going into public sector. I have worked past, like, several years in private sector. And this is, like, you know, Hopkinton. I lived in Hopkinton for past one year. And I'm right now currently living in South Borough, which is like 10 minutes. I started, like, you know, as a financial research analyst right off from school in Connecticut. That's where we lived. And from there, like, you know, I started, like, you know, all the numbers and analytics, everything that has to do with that. Then I moved on to as business manager for Intelligent Technical Services, where I did most of the documentation, more analytics, organization. And then I moved on to a company called Fidelix Lighting, where I was as a business manager, and then moved on to the director of operations, where I managed most of their vendor relationship management for all the vendors that were available, like, you know, around the state, as well as overseas. So I am, like, you know, as he mentioned, like, you know, like, nobody can get away with, like, you know, good, like, you know, bargain, like, you know, if I am there, like, you know. That's, that's, that's why I'm here, for Hopkinton, to make sure we get the best deal of everything.
Well, I've experienced some of the bargaining in South Asia. And, yeah, I don't like bargaining with them. Board members, any questions?
So I read through your resume. You know, everything looks great. Looks like you have the right skill set and everything. Do you have any experience with getting grants or ideas for improving our grant process?
I do not, but I have, like, you know, I am a very quick learner, and I'm sure, like, you know, I can get very fast track on that one.
I just want to add...
Go ahead.
I just want to say welcome. I would have asked Amy's question, and there's an awful lot of talent in this town, in the grant writing field. So you'll have, you'll have a lot of support as you learn. And we do love a good grant, for sure.
Absolutely.
Anyway, welcome. I really appreciate your enthusiasm for the work.
Yes, thank you. No, actually, just welcome. I found everything to be really interesting, and I think you'll be a good fit. Thank you.
So I echo what everyone said on the board. Ben did a great job. And it's great to have Ben here to use as a reference, I mean, as a resource, to kind of pull what Ben has done and then implement your own style in getting these grants. It's, he did, he really did a wonderful job. And we were sad to see him get promoted, if there's such a thing. But under his tutelage and your expertise, I'm sure that it will be seamless and that you'll, you'll make us so glad that Ben got promoted.
Thank you, very big shoes to fill, so yes.
Yep.
So I echo what everyone else here is saying. Ben, Ben has been incredible. And, you know, we can only go up. So looking forward to having you.
Look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kamalu?
Yes, with your permission, Mr. Chair, I would like to invite Don Jazarowski. He's participating remotely.
Okay, Ben, can you liven him up?
Yeah, as we're doing that, by way of introduction, this is not a new position. He is filling the vacancy that was created by Steve Peacock's resignation. He is going to be working as a custodian in the facilities department under the direct supervision of the facilities manager. He comes to us with three years of experience working for the St. Mark's School in South Borough. He also worked two years for IPG Photonics. And he, he has taken some coursework in business and computer science. What we found out when we met him, and this was also, as I said, with other candidates confirmed through our references, he is polite, considerate, and always approachable. He's a hard worker. And because of his skill set, he's always willing to jump in and help in any area that has to do with custodial work. He has excelled in doing plumbing, electrical, and carpentry assignments. He's a self-starter, who works very well on his own, as well as on teams. And I am sure if he's affirmed tonight, Dave Daltorio, Nay, and Matt will be happy to have him as part of their team. The first round interview panelists were Dave Daltorio, Matt Reed, Amy Beck, and Christian Merrill. The second interview included Dave Daltorio, Matt Reed, Heather Beckman, and Jessica Loweryn.
Excellent, thank you. Don, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I can't seem to figure out the video right now.
Well, that doesn't speak very well.
Zoom mic, tell them.
All right, Donny, tell us a little bit about yourself. Well, we can, so we can see you, we can see your name, but we can't see you. But you can go ahead and speak, and we'll ask questions to the, to the name.
Okay.
Ah, there you are.
There I am. And sorry, it was loading for a little while.
No worries.
No, I'm just excited to start for the town of Hopkinton. I was actually since working at St. Mark's boarding school as a custodian there. And I came across one of the, one of your jobs indeed. And I actually talked to my, my boss about it, who was actually encouraging me to do more. And he said that, you know, this would be a very good opportunity for me, chance to learn a little more, actually grow a little more. And, you know, I've always wanted to work for a town, especially because, you know, you get to have this sense of community. And you kind of get to know the people that you're actually working for every single day.
Absolutely. Well, we like people who like community. That's what we're all volunteering here for, so... Board members, any questions? Ms. Ritter-Bush?
I'm not, I'm not sure that I actually have any questions, but I read through your resume. It seems like a good fit, and I'm glad you can join.
Awesome, thank you.
Hi, down here. I, I just want to welcome you to town. I don't really have any questions either, but I really appreciate that, that your previous employer sort of supported your growth. And I hope that you find that this move is really good for you. We're, we're very happy to have you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, welcome to town. And I want to ask you, are you a jazzy person? Do you like jazz?
Yes, actually.
So you can listen to a little while you're working around here?
Yeah.
I think we're going to, everybody's going to enjoy having you.
Oh, thank you.
So Donald, my, my assistant director of nurses where I work, her husband is a St. Mark's guy for a long time, and I didn't get any feedback. I just texted when I saw that you were a St. Mark's guy. I didn't get any feedback, so I don't have anything pro or con. It's Woody. Yeah, so, but, no, I know that St. Mark's is a wonderful place. And if you, if you, if you, if you work there and you want to leave there to come here, and you're doing it on your own volition, I think that's a good sign. So welcome to Hopkinton.
Thank you.
And all I can say is, you know, I echo what everyone else is saying. I think coming from St. Mark's, that's a, that's a great, great spot. And I love the career growth that you're seeking, and we're encouraged to take. If you're into jazz, I got to say, now, are you into the Pat McFaney or the Kenny G side?
Honestly, to be completely honest, I only look up jazz when we're just, my wife and I are sitting down for dinner or anything like that. So I don't know any real names. I usually just go on Pandora and type in jazz, to be honest.
All right, we'll take it, we'll take it.
Can't believe that this is, I can't believe that this is part of your job interview.
Sorry about that.
I'm happy with it.
There you go, your last name is Lefrenia. Do you like to laugh?
Yeah. Well, we called my mother-in-law, ran me laughing, so there you go.
Well, I'm happy with it, the jazz, so I'm going to be quizzing you when you get here.
Welcome to Hopkinton.
I'm going to have to study.
Thanks, Donald.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kamalu?
Yes, and finally, Julie Snyderman. With your permission, I'll ask Ben to fire her up. She's participating remotely. As we're doing that, I'd like the board to know that this is also not a new position. She has big shoes to fill, replacing Marlene Troops as the outreach coordinator at the senior center. She holds a Bachelor of Arts degree in human development and social relations, as well as a Master of Science degree in occupational therapy. Has worked for two years at Tri Valley Inc. as a supportive services coordinator. Twelve and a half years at Bay Park Elder Services as a resident service coordinator, as well as as options counselor. She also worked as an occupational therapist for six years. The references confirmed what we really enjoyed finding out during the interview process. Very pragmatic problem solver, good with follow-through. Very pragmatic problem solver, good with follow-through, a collaborator, always friendly, non-threatening, compassionate, down-to-earth, and is a moving library of a very broad range of community resources. The first round interview wa- included Amy Beck, Shannon Soares from the, uh, Land Use Department, and Jessica Lawrence from HR. Uh, the second round was Amy Beck, Chief Slemen, Colleen Susan from Youth and Family Services, and Maria Casey.
Excellent. Julia, you here? Can you hear us? Ben, is she here?
Yeah, she's on, she's here.
No pressure, Ben.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, there you are.
You can see me too.
Hello, Julia. So, um, read your resume, everything looks great. Um, you wanna say a few words?
Sure, yeah, well, I have to say, I went and resigned, I said, uh, I'm really sorry I resigned, but this is truly my dream job, so you can't pass that up. Yeah, I've loved working with elders, uh, I had a wonderful grandmother, and when I worked as an occupational therapist, um, that's when I really started being interested in the more elderly folks. Um, I took a break to be at home with my kids for a while, and then I knew I wanted to work out more in the community, so I was able to work for Bay Path Elder Service Services for, uh, I guess about eleven years. And I worked as a service coordinator, um, at Mission Springs in Hollistan, which is a housing site for low-to-moderate income elders. And they are, really did very similar things, to outreach coordinator, um, resources, information, helping people with applications, making up, you know, creating, uh, some fun stuff to do groups. Um, I sort of felt like I was running my own senior center in a way. Uh, but I really missed having colleagues, um, than the office manager. And one of my former colleagues from Bay Path is Joyce Brown, who was outreach coordinator at Hopkinton. Um, she retired just a couple of years ago, and I knew she loved working at Hopkinton. Um, and then I, I, yeah, I've worked for the past two years, again, in housing, um, the Tri Valley, working at five different housing sites, um, one in a day, doing similar things, but, um, I just, I'm just so excited to have colleagues again. And, uh, you know, I've kept my eye on Hopkinton, and I know it's a very vibrant, you know, senior center, great director, so I'm just thrilled to be joining you folks.
That's excellent. You know, I think, um, the outreach coordinator at the senior center is, uh, is a critical role, and, uh, to have somebody who's excited and thrilled to be here and do this for us, uh, I'm delighted. Board members, do we have any, uh, comments, questions?
I just wanted to say welcome and ask, um, do you, could you give us, um, a little bit example of how you've been doing outreach a little differently during the pandemic? It's been a lot, a hard couple of years, like, how you've been reaching residents that are harder to reach?
Yeah, so with my job, I was, um, calling some of my regular folks. Like, I was in a different, uh, town each day, specifically Monday I was in Uxbridge, Tuesday Millis, et cetera. So I had kind of regulars, I would just reach out, um, and so we spent kind of more time on the phone, a lot more sometimes. And then also, um, actually, like, food stamps, they created something where you could do it online, so we could do some of that stuff. Uh, one time, actually, a guy needed to, um, change his, the birthdate on his social security card, so, um, he had a computer at home, so I used mine, and I set up a, a sort of fake account, which I was able to delete, but I could kind of walk him through, you know, how to do that, um, so that was pretty cool. So, yeah, you sort of had to be creative, and then, at one point, we were back in, like, in the fall, I think we were back in, um, the towns for a little bit, but then we left again when it, the upsurge in, like, January, so.
Great, thank you.
Squamir?
Yeah, hi, um, I, I'm gonna follow, uh, Amy's question. Um, I'm kind of curious as to, um, what you're most looking forward to, now that we're a little bit more, um, open and, and in-person, and, and what kind of, um, you know, what kind of programming, uh, changes or adjustments do you think we'll need to make to make sure we're, we're bringing pe- people back in and understanding their needs, and, and maybe moderating our, our outreach a little bit, because we're still not out of the COVID scare entirely?
Yeah, yeah, uh, it'll be interesting to see, um, and there is the Massachusetts Council on Aging. It's an excellent resource for all, uh, senior centers, so, um, we'll certainly be able to see what other people have been doing as well through them, but, um, but, yeah, I'm definitely just looking forward to meeting people and hopefully being together, uh, for a while, wearing masks. Again, possibly, uh, it's hard to know what we're gonna have to do. I really think some of the folks I worked with were, um, did not, some of them did not have the technology that other folks do. Uh, like, my dad's ninety, but he's been using computers for, like, thirty years, so, you know, he's got, like, five iPads or something. But some other folks, um, really didn't, or just didn't wanna learn, so I think ultimately, we really need to address that more with people who, who aren't comfortable with it, um, and see, because it's, it's an ongoing thing, and, and, you know, they're doing health checkups through and have before, so I think that would be something interesting to, you know, see if we can expand more of that. But I think what is great is, say, someone doesn't feel well, has a cold, it's winter, you know, we could probably do some of our stuff, uh, online again, you know, we, uh, like, they could do the TED Talks, and I think there'll be some hybrid things going on, um, in the future.
Thank you so much, welcome.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, I just, I wanted to say, I'm really glad to see you here, and, uh, you do have big shoes to fill, Marlene was wonderful, but.
I know.
I'm looking at it where it says Certified Dementia Practitioner. We have the, uh, café, the Memory Café, which includes a lot of people with dementia. We've also had a course here at the senior center for, uh, for people who want to attend to people with dementia, and it was very well attended. I know, I know I did that. And I am really glad to see that you wanna work with housing authorities, senior centers, social workers, and mental health practitioners, which we ha- all have, we have those all in town, and you will probably be working with all of them. So we're, we're glad you're here.
Thank you.
And for me, Julia, everyone here has covered all the points. We're glad to have you to Hopkinton and, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I, I don't have much to add, as I think everyone's kind of covered everything, as, as you did as well. So, welcome to Hopkinton. I am going to request a motion to confirm the town manager's appointment of Simone Carter as public health nurse, Shivani Raval as procurement and grants manager, Donald Jazarovski as the custodian, and Julia Schneiderman as the outreach coordinator.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? abstained? It passes.
Welcome aboard, all.
Welcome aboard. Uh, next, appointments, um, board committees and officials. Uh, the board will continue making annual appointments to boards, committees, and offices this week, uh, this evening. We have constable, traffic constable, and board of registers of voter, registrars of voters' appointments before us. Before we get to the registrars of voters, let's consider the constable appointments.
I move to appoint, unless there's any discussion, I would move to appoint Scott Grandfry as constable, to a term expiring six thirty twenty-four.
So moved?
Second.
Actually, I don't need to so move it, you moved it yourself.
You moved it, yeah, okay, we got a second, all right.
It's been moved.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? abstained? All right. Scott, you are, uh, confirmed.
Same with James Frederick.
Okay.
Oh, no, not yet.
Not yet, okay, so, um, Amy, would you like to do the honors?
Oh, sure, I would like to move to appoint James Frederick as traffic constable, to a term expiring six thirty twenty-four.
Second.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I missed.
Jim Frederick. James Frederick.
Just for my curiosity, we've appointed a lot of traffic constables, is there a limit to how many we can appoint? It seems like we appointed a long list the last time.
Is there a limit to how many constable, traffic constables we can appoint?
No, it's fulfilling a need.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Good.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? abstained? Okay. Welcome back, Jim Frederick. Connor Deegan, town clerk, will join the board to discuss appointments of, uh, appointments to the board of registrars of voters. There are two vacancies, uh, one for nominee of the Democratic Town Committee, and one for nominee for the Republican Town Committee. Mr. Deegan, take it away.
Uh, so, I don't believe we ended up getting a, uh, anyone for the Republican Town Committee on our list. Uh, we still are awaiting a nominee from them, but we have to do one from each party for the current vacancies. So, uh, the current list that the Democrats gave us, they said that that was the order of preference that they had for the candidates. So, uh, it's up to you folks to decide if you have a preference, but that's their, their stated preference.
So.
One of those.
So, one of those three, and can you appoint one if there's not a, um, Republican?
Yes, so, so we're not appointing, um, on a competing seat, so we don't have to worry about having a Republican and a Democrat in for, uh, to compete against each other essentially for the appointment. There are two vacancies, uh, are expired terms at this point, and one of them is for a Democrat to fill, one of them is for a Republican to fill.
And the current Republican, could they continue until a new person is appointed, so it wouldn't really be a vacancy?
Yep, so, uh, our charter does allow for it, as well as the general law, to make it so that if the term ends and a successor has not been appointed, they can pr- continue to serve in the role.
So it'll maintain the balance, I guess, anyway.
So, do we need to hear from the existing, uh, expired, uh, Republican in order to?
The, um, the outgoing Republican is the switch to enrolled, so they would no longer be eligible to be nominated by the Republican Town Committee.
Who is that?
Uh, Brian Karp.
Oh, Brian Karp, yeah.
Yep.
But he can continue to serve?
He can continue to serve. Uh, the only pieces that needs to be decided by the board as well is there are technically two vacancies, uh, because both are expired terms. The board decides which one goes to which person, uh, which term, because one of them expired in February of twenty twenty, and one expired in February of twenty twenty-one.
So, so this is both, both for Republicans, or?
Nope, one for a Democrat, one for a Republican. We don't have a Republican yet, so basically, the decision before you right now is, uh.
Just a Democrat.
Is, yeah, and do they get a, uh, three-year term, or just shy of a three-year term, or just shy of a two-year term?
So, Janine, the Democrat, Jane Wheeler Ristania, Ristiano, she expired the.
Last year in twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, so it seems like we should replace her, does that make sense, and then we'll leave?
So for clarification, uh, as a nurse, we don't like to say she expired.
Her term expired in twenty twenty.
She's still very healthy, thank goodness.
So, it seems like we should fill her seat at, at this point.
I think that.
What do you think, Scott?
I think it's entirely at the discretion of the board.
You're not a politician yet.
I actually think that, I think that's a, a good way to do it. I think it maintains a really even method, so I, I commend you folks on coming up with that as a possibility.
Way to go, Amy.
Okay.
Okay.
And I had talked to Darlene Hayes about this earlier today, too, about Doris Early being the first priority appointment, so I guess I would like to move to appoint Doris Early to the Board of Registered Voters, to a term expiring, let's see, it would be tw- it's a two-year term, so the one, oh, she'll be expiring one year, is that correct?
So expire, as it was for twenty twenty, so expired in, it will expire in February of twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty, okay. So I'd like to move to appoint Doris Early to the Board of Registered Voters, to a term expiring of February twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can, can I just ask, can you just take two minutes to explain the position? If there's a new person out there that might like to put their name in for the other open speak?
I'll, I'll be brief.
Yes.
So it's essentially, uh, it's a board that can serve in a quasi-judicial fashion, as well as, uh, an executive fashion when it comes to running and administering elections. Most of the duties and day-to-day activities of the registrars fall in the town clerk's office, as the town clerk is an ex officio member of the board. Uh, it is a four-member board, it is designed that way, so that there can always, there can be ties, uh, because any tie is then pushed to higher courts to deal with. They run the recount procedure, they approve different, uh, postings when it comes to, uh, ballot counting of any ballots that are received following the election, if they come in by mail or from overseas, and they oversee that process.
Can you, so, I'm, I'm a little concerned that we don't have a Republican can, um, person on this board. Um, so what do we do? I mean, I think that.
I actually think the third person is actually a Republican, I believe, unless.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Well, yeah, we do have a Republican on there. Um, we, we're currently in good shape. It just, it's one of those things that it always helps to have three, and it always helps to keep up with, uh, you know, people who are con- are attending the board meetings and things like that. We don't meet very often outside of an election year, so. I, I can say that Veda, who's also on, Veda Kerr, who's on there, as well as Brian, have been very active in the last year. It's been, uh, they've been very helpful in getting done what we need to get done. So, uh, this is just, I think this is a great step towards just keeping everything going smoothly.
Have you had any indication at all from the Republican Town Committee as some, who they might be putting on, or that they might be forthcoming somewhere?
I've had a, I've sent a few correspondences to the chair, I have not heard back yet, but, um, we're hoping that we'll hear back soon. They might not have any meetings in the summer sometimes, uh, some committees I know don't.
They might give you a candidate by our next meeting, so.
It, it's possible, and then, you know, if it's a case that it's gonna come on again, then we'll, you know, we'll talk with Norman in the town manager's office to figure out, you know, if we need to add it to the next agenda, I don't, next agenda for the meeting, or potentially a future one.
Okay.
All right, great, so we, uh, we had a motion, we seconded, um, we voted before we started discussing again, so should we, do we need to revote?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Do we vote? Do we all say aye?
We're all set. I just, I just thought people might be interested in the position.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on, the appointment of a fire chief. The select board has received a screening report from Maria Casey, the Human Resources Director, uh, which details the fire chief's screening and interview process, and makes a recommendation to the board. Um, the board will consider accepting the report and make an appointment. Board members, um, do we have any comments or questions?
I just think that it would be nice if the public understood the process, if we could have a little bit of the process discussed.
Maria, would you mind, uh, expanding on the process a bit?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so, in accordance with the town charter, the town post the position, um, has to, uh, be posted for ten days at a minimum. The charter is silent on whether it's internal or external. Ninety-nine out of a hundred times, we prefer to do internal to promote from within. And, um, the charter also notes that no appointment, uh, to fill the position shall be effective until seventeen days following the date of such public notice was given, and so that was July thirty-first. As is the town's standard practice, the HR, uh, department, the director in this case, the town manager, acting de facto hiring manager, reviewed the application screening criteria. Determination for meets the minimum was, in this instance, a college degree, ten years' experience in fire services, five years of which command or supervisory, and evidence of some, but not necessarily all, of five key areas. That is administration, public relations, operations, budget, staffing, and human resources. The, um, internal posting yielded one candidate, um, candidate is Deputy Chief. Candidate is Deputy Chief Bill Miller. The town manager, the assistant town manager, and myself interviewed Deputy Miller. And Deputy Miller has the education, the requisite number of years' experience in fire services, and number of years of command supervisory experience. He's also a mass chief fire officer and a fire instructor I, II, and III. During the interview, Deputy Miller articulated how he has, over the years, prepared and positioned himself for the fire chief role. He explained his understanding of his previous roles and the chief's role and related leadership skills developed over time. In summation, over the years, he's interacted well with peers and other senior leaders on community risk reduction initiatives, budgeting, and fund development. His work on the LNG-related matters and as a member of the Hopkinton Emergency Management Group have all prepared him for directing the town's emergency management services as well. Candidate Miller's explanation about teams, people in general, decisions, programs, techniques, achievements, spoke to his self-awareness, commitment to ensuring stability at the fire department, his understanding of the community needs, and the commitment to the overall town strategy, including the pledge that the Select Board supported. So, the interview panel agreed that candidate Miller should be recommended for consideration to the Select Board.
Excellent, thank you. It seems like we're missing two people up here for this appointment.
I think chief.
Chief Slaman? Welcome, Chief Slaman, welcome, deputy chief. Would you, do you have a few words that you'd like to...
What I can say to the board is I've really enjoyed working with Bill as my deputy chief for the last five years. Part of what I've done as a chief is build the plan for the growth of our department, and Bill has sustained five years of my relentless organization of that plan. I think when you, when Maria read the aspects of the posting, Bill worked on every single one of those areas for five years for me, and he did it in certain paces, and it's all really come together in the last year and a half. I think COVID was almost a blessing in its development, because I really needed to pivot a little bit to work with the Board of Health and to work on the town as a whole in emergency management, and I literally just turned to Bill and said, "You need to keep the operations of the fire department going, the human resources of the fire department going." All the documents that I had written in the last couple of years, I showed and I said, "These are our goals, this is the direction." I was very tough on him because being a fire chief is a tough job. There's a lot of challenges, and you've got to work hard, and people are demanding, and that's good, that's what we're supposed to do. So, I'm very excited that he's now in this position and he's built the background that it takes to take this job on, and I'm very happy to say you've got a really good candidate in front of you.
Fantastic. Bill, you know, we take a recommendation from Chief Slaman very seriously, and the fact that you've been under his tutelage speaks volumes. Would you like to say anything to the board?
Thank you. I am promoted tonight. Again, thank the board, thank the town manager, the assistant town manager, HR, my wife as well too. It's been by my side through this journey. Chief Slaman has pushed me to, as he said, to limits that one person didn't think they could go to, but it was all for the better. And, you know, working with this community, the love for this community is unbelievable, and just to be part of it is, is an honor, and to be moved up is an honor as well too.
Thank you. Board members?
I'm going last.
Okay.
Let's read a bunch.
So, I really appreciate all the documentation we got from, in the meeting packet and from Maria Casey in advance, and how everyone has spoken well of you, and it's wonderful. My question to you would be, could you talk a little bit about your outreach experience? And we have a lot of newer residents in town, and some of them are still English learners, and can you talk about your outreach experience and ideas?
Sure, quick, like, one of the things we've done is we've, we're going to be incorporating a community risk reduction, and we've recognized that we do lack in some areas where we need to try to get into other areas of the community that may have that breakdown in communications. So, our Fire Prevention Bureau has been out and done some outreach with those as well. We're going to continue to build off of that with our community risk reduction and do a better job at outreach into those folks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mary Claire Kramer?
Yes, so first I would like to say it has been my personal and professional pleasure to know you over time in your various roles at the fire department, and we have been always very lucky to have you as part of the town's fire department. I have personally experienced what it is like to have, have you at the scene of a challenging and difficult and scary situation for my family, and it was very comforting to see you and all of your fellow responders, knowing that my son was in great hands. And, you know, I can't say enough what it means to people in situations like that to have competent, caring, calm, capable people. Wow, that's a lot of Cs, you got a lot of work. So, I just wanted to say that. I would be remiss not to say that not just you, but many, many folks on the department have been in places where it's really critical and really important, and that's the most important work that you do, and we appreciate that every day.
Thank you.
I also, you know, we've talked a lot tonight about big shoes and, and good luck. Chief Slaman has been amazing. We've been very, very fortunate to have him here, and I know that you will do a standout job as well. So, you know, I don't have any concerns about that. But one of the things that I have really appreciated that Chief Slaman has done is sort of his really relentless outreach and networking to bring different pieces of the town's boards, committees, and functionalities into the conversation that he knew we needed to have. So, my question is, how do you think you will grow that, that concept and make it your own?
That's a really good question. Continue to build off of what Chief Slaman has started. He has opened the doors, there's endless avenues that we can look at and we can assess, and I think we just need to keep assessing it as well as assessing how the community is changing. Are we fitting the needs for the community? We know Hopkinton is growing tremendously, even as we sit here right now. We need to constantly be looking at that and offering the services. Are we doing what we need to be doing? Are we meeting the need of the community?
Welcome, congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
I just want to say that I think that the two of you look absolutely splendid in your dresses.
Thank you.
So shiny over there.
Chief makes me look good.
No, you have huge shoes to fill, and I know you know it, and we have worked together on the Marathon Committee for a good number of years, so we've got to know each other, and I, I think that making our deputy chief, our new chief, is the right way to go.
Thank you.
So, five years ago, I sat out there during all the garbage that went on with the town trying to do a, an external national search for our chief, where our deputy chief, who was, who was waiting in the wings, was far more capable than anybody that they had done, that they had, that they had found in a national search. They then wanted to do a second national search, which was more absurd. That caused me to be sitting here. It was evident that, and I will say that I am one of the very few board members that's ever been up here that's pronounced Chief Slaman's name, Slaman. It's not Slaman.
Sorry, sorry.
So, when, when Chief Slaman said that he was relentless on you, it is not lost. The level of relentlessness that Chief Slaman brings to his organization and to his details cannot be described in the amount of time that I have to describe it. The fact that he came up and gave you a glowing reference speaks volumes for the work that you've done with Chief Slaman. I know that you've been with the town for 22 years. So, with Chief Slaman's dedication to the public service, I mean, public safety, knowing that you're the, generally you are the de facto chief, now this is a job that you are laterally stepping into as a promotion. You have done it with pride, you've done it with class, and with dignity. Knowing you for 22 years, I can't imagine the amount of anxiety and angst that you have sitting there right now. But you are, you are exactly what our town needs. You're smart, you're vibrant, you're energetic, you know the fire service inside and out. You are trained by the best, and you will take all the great points that Chief Slaman brought and turn this department into your own. We said that to Chief Slaman when he came in, the same glowing recommendations from Chief Clark. Chief Clark was an awesome, awesome fire chief. Chief Slaman took those great points and some of the points that maybe weren't as great and just excelled that. You'll do the same thing, except now you're another level. So, it just speaks volumes, the fact that we were able to come and find our deputy chief is the natural successor, and that hopefully, pending this vote, that it goes that way. I'm very proud to have sat here as a selectman and now a Select Board member, to have promoted Chief Slaman, to have promoted Chief Bennett. We're doing the right things for our town with the right people, and it makes me very proud to be able to sit up here. This is the reason why I ran for selectman, is to, is to bring things like this to our community. I have worked very close with the department as the liaison for the last four years. Whenever Chief Slaman's out of town, you're the de facto chief. You're, as soon as there's a tough call, you're on the phone to me, and your transparency and level of communication, both of you are second to none, but you obviously picked up your communication by his tutelage. So, giant shoes to fill, I'm not shy, I'll tell you when you're not filling his shoes, I'll let you know. But congratulations. I'm very proud to have you in front of us.
I really don't have that much to add, I mean, I think everyone has kind of covered all the bases. I think being under Chief Slaman's...
I can die a happy man.
I just think Slaman's Sammy so, so funny here. But being under his tutelage, that speaks volumes, and the fact that he's been grooming you, and if he is saying that you're ready, I know you're ready, so with that...
Well, just a moment, I do have a letter that was sent to the board, and with your permission, I'd like to read.
Please.
This is sent to the Hopkinton Board of Selectmen, obviously a very archaic person who isn't aware that we are now the Select Board. Dear Mr. Tedstone, I would like to offer my wholehearted support to William Miller for the position of fire chief, town of Hopkinton. As my career in the fire department was winding down, along came a professional firefighter to the town who displayed exemplary knowledge and skills in all aspects of firefighting, teamwork, and a willingness to share his wealth of knowledge with others. In particular, Bill spent a great deal of time in teaching newer firefighters basic and advanced skills, the importance of working closely together, and how rewarding the job can be in serving the public during their time of need. On many occasions, I worked with Bill during emergency and non-emergency situations where he was in total control at all times, keeping everyone involved, calm and collected, not an easy feat in such stressful situations. There is no doubt that Bill Miller will serve superbly in the fire chief position in Hopkinton. All townspeople, as well as partners in the fire and emergency services far and wide, will be well-served by his appointment to the position. Thank you for your consideration, respectfully submitted, Robert H. Bartlett, Deputy Chief, Hopkinton Fire Department, retired. So, anybody who knows Bob Bartlett as a fire chief, as a highway guy, as a person, knows that those letters do not come willy-nilly. So, you have earned his respect. You have earned his respect.
Thank you. And that's a big deal.
Yep.
That is a big deal. So, with that, I request a motion to accept the Human Resource, Human Resources Director's screening report and appoint William R. Miller to the position of fire chief for the town of Hopkinton, subject to successful contract negotiations, and to authorize the town manager and the town legal team to commence negotiations.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
So, one of the things that, that happened, when we promoted the Chief Slaman to chief last time, the fire service is very big and pomp and circumstance. One of the biggest things that I kicked myself in the bottom is that I did not afford him the chance to get pinned. It's one of my deepest regrets, although it's one of my greatest accomplishments promoting him to chief. One of my deepest regrets is not taking part in a pinning ceremony. So, Chief Miller, if you have somebody here that may or may not want to pin you, I think that's a giant thing, and I would love for you to do that on camera.
You have full support on that? I am 100% behind you.
I wasn't sure what you were going to do, but I grabbed one of these just in case.
Camera's right here.
Camera's right over there, yeah.
Get out of the way, Bill.
It's official.
Congratulations.
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 Hey, congratulations.
So, normally, I'm, I'm big on sticking to agendas, but I think it's also worth our while to take a minute or two to... This is the last time that we will see Chief Slaman in a, Slaman? So, this is the last time we're going to see Chief Slaman in his role as fire chief with the town of Hopkinton. Chief, it's been an honor to have you work with us. It was an honor for me to be part of the selection to help get you there. We'll miss you tremendously as a, as a fire chief. You know how I feel about you personally and professionally. This is a very bittersweet moment for me. It hearkens me back to the, when we were going through the process, and it brings back very vibrant memories of Tommy McIntyre and all the work that he did to get you front and center. So, for me as a selectman, thank you very much, it's been, it truly has been an honor. As much as I razz you that, you know, you worked 25 years in your position to get to where you were, I worked three weeks, I'm your boss. So, you really, you really brought that position to the forefront and took that ball and ran with it, and I couldn't be more proud to call you a friend and as a, as a fire chief, so thank you.
Chief, I got to meet you when I was on the planning board, and then following that up as the, on the Select Board, well, I was Board of Selectmen at the time, and we changed it. And then, on my first day as chair, you threw me the biggest curveball I could ever, ever expect, that you were going to retire. It's been an honor, and I've gained a tremendous amount of respect for all you do and what you've done for this community, and I'm really sad to see you go, but I know that, I feel good that you've, in everything you do, you've planned for this and have the replacement ready, so thank you.
Appreciate that.
So, I really appreciate seeing you at so many meetings, the planning board, the growth study committee, you came to everything, and it was really valuable to the board members to get your feedback and to make sure that we're, everything's being designed with safety standards in mind. And you've got big shoes to fill. Enjoy your retirement, though.
Thank you very much.
So, I would like to say that I already have said often that I like, we saw you all the time and the way you invested yourself professionally and personally in all aspects of the town is so admirable, but I also want to say the way, the way you did the job is exemplary and really, really, really set the gold standard for leadership in this town, and that, that's about as big as it gets for me. I've been very impressed and very gratified as a, as a taxpayer and a resident to see you doing this job, and you have done it flawlessly. We're really going to miss you.
I just want to say that I'm very happy that...
I just want to say that I'm very happy that I was out there in the audience that night.
Me too.
When all the happy stuff went down and you became chief. And I'm very glad I was and I just, I, I can't really talk. I feel really bad that we're losing you. However, you have been one class act. Thanks.
Thank you so much. I mean, if I even start talking now, not both day, that's how much this jury has been to me, but I thank you. Nice to have you as a board member and community's been great and just can't thank you enough. Thanks.
So.
If I may.
Yes, I want, I want you, and then I'm going to close with one statement.
Go ahead. Please.
On, on behalf of the town employees, all I can say, Chief, is take you back to a gift I shared with you many years ago and that gift had three words, meets, magic and mindset. That's what you've given to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So my closing statement is, and this is going to make you cry, Buzz is up there staring at you right now and you know what? It's going to make me cry too. There's no son, there's no way that anybody would ever be more proud of a guy like you.
Appreciate it.
Awesome role model and you've done him proud.
Thanks.
So we can move on here.
Come to the front there.
Ready everybody? All right y'all. All right y'all, it's on me. Hi.
That same workforce that's out there recruiting is really digging up everything we can for this scale. If you go to the, so I actually mentioned this, is the engineering team there. So what I will do is go and present to a capital committee, the Repligen Capital Committee. We go for the $15 million approval and that's how we move forward. So what am I asking? It's, I think, a win-win for the community and for Repligen. It's a continued presence in Mass. I've worked in Mass, I actually live in Rhode Island, so I gotta put that out there. But I've worked in Mass for 40 years. I started when I was two, I think, no. At least 40 years in this state. I went to school at WPI and we bring a lot of WPI and Massachusetts people into our operation. And that's because they're good. And honestly, I have a very easy answer to that question. So what I'm looking for, we'll be looking for with working with Norman on the TIF. And then again, that leads into the abandoned building deduction. That's it.
Excellent, thank you. Board members, any questions?
I guess I just want to ask if there'd be any dangerous chemicals that you're working with or obviously you'd follow safety.
Absolutely, it's all safety protocols, so in there proteins and biologics. So at that time, it's just how you handle the waste. And we have full, actually Lonza left a pretty good waste system. We're going to modify that, but no, we don't use any real chemicals. You have, there is ethanol as used, 20% ethanol will be a lot of our product, which is, yeah.
I think we'd love to see that vacant building filled and put to good use.
Yes.
Squibb?
Yeah, no, I'm thrilled to know that that building will be put to use and also that fancy waste system. I apologize if I missed this, but can you tell us sort of, it sounds like you're really growing. What is your, like your five-year or your slightly longer-term strategy here in Massachusetts?
Oh, longer term than five years, you're a gambler, aren't you? We look three to five years, honestly, we look three to five years. Our Waltham site right now is our corporate headquarters. We are actually looking, expanding on that footprint. We are also, as I mentioned, expanding into Marlboro. Those investments will be three to five years. The Hockington site itself, we are going to be full. In 2023, 2024, we'll be at full, we'll be full bore going. My plan, and this is not for shareholders yet, is the plan would be eventually you move your, the single-use assembly, the clean room assembly, as that grows too big, you have to move that to another site. And with that, the protein side of that building should be growing at the same time. So that building, we have plans for a long term. About more sites in Massachusetts, well, we've been hiring good people in Massachusetts, so I don't see that going away.
Great, thank you so much. I don't have another question necessarily for you, but before we leave this, I think that it would be nice for the public, who may not know as much about TIFs and so forth, to just have a little introduction to what that means for us.
Well, do you want to do that? I'm not probably the best one, but maybe you could help or?
Yeah, I can do it. Again, I think by way of introduction, when this initiative came to my attention, the following things came to mind. Number one, we've worked with the property owner for many years. He's somebody who's known to us, Harold Nahigan, and he has been a very good partner to this community. Secondly, this whole idea of bringing a building that is currently unoccupied into use was very attractive. And then thirdly, the type of industry that was being proposed lines up neatly with what the town is looking for, clean industries. The whole idea of job creation right in the middle of a pandemic was very strong. It was very, very attractive to us. And thus, against that background, what then would be a TIF? A TIF simply looks at the investment that is made into the property in terms of any repairs, renovations, and so forth. And what then happens, and I'm not preempting our negotiations, is then we sit down with the property owner as well as the tenants and agree on what portion of that value is the town willing to forego and under what terms. So the base value and the income coming to the town stays. All we're looking to is what is then added to the building by the company coming in and making the $15 million investment.
Thank you. I think that's very helpful. Yeah, that was good, very good. That's the way I, my view is that, you know, we're not, we're paying taxes right away, that's not changing. We're adding to the value of the building and the operation. And what we're asking for is financing on that, on that extra value.
Perfect, thank you. I think that's very helpful.
Mr. Fain?
Well, as an assessor, I've had tips in the other towns that I've worked in. And I think also we had one in this town. And I've always felt that they were very appropriate to certain businesses. And right now, in particular, to bring in jobs and the community workforce. And the building is already there. It's like a brownfield being redone. And I just would be behind this. I have only one question, and actually it's for Norman. And it's, a TIF still has to go through town meeting.
That is correct.
Okay, okay. I'm all for it.
So as a board member, I have been part of one corporation that came before us for a TIF, successfully likened Bioscience. And they've been, from all accounts, wonderful partners to our community. And it's been a, it's been a, we've been fortunate to have them in our town. There was another company that came before us. It was kind of fly-by-night that we vetted out and they wound up not meeting muster. So we're fortunate to have Mr. Kamalo here to kind of take us through the pros and cons. And your presentation was good. I had no prior aware of the Commonwealth abandoned building deduction, but it's good to know that that's there. And you said your headquarters are in Waltham?
Yes.
Where in Waltham?
41 Seon Street. It's near, it's in the middle of, it's not really near anything for that, sorry.
All right. No, so, you know, this is great to be able to get one of these vacant buildings to actually start generating a little revenue for our town and kind of offsetting some of our expenses that are coming in.
We did talk with our neighbors and, or potentially, and really looked at what the, you know, the, how successful they've been. So that's one of the things that we looked at.
Thanks.
So thank you for the presentation. I think it was excellent. Couple of questions. I know that you're talking about hiring. Are there any special qualifications that you need for applicants?
Actually, that's a good question. A lot of times, this is specialized. So we hire, you could theoretically come from, just from high school, and we'd come in and train you. Typically, that's not, although you do hire on the curve and that's to keep it vibrant. So we would hire right out of high school and train ourselves. We also use local colleges. I know for a fact I use in Waltham Quincy College and they had a program. I know that there is a program in a local high school close to here that I would definitely tap into in Framingham. I forgot the name of it.
Kif Tech.
Kif Tech.
Oh, excellent.
And to me, that has been absolutely fantastic. It's worked really well in Waltham, and I don't see any reason why it wouldn't work here.
It's a great school.
Fantastic.
When you spoke about high schools, did you take high school interns?
So we do take, so summer interns, yes, but typically they're college right now. That's what we're taking college interns, but we do take interns. So it's definitely with, this hire, I think you saw, worldwide, we're about 1,200 people right now. Actually, that's a little dated. We're probably 1,300 by now. So you can see 200 is a significant, you know, that's a significant increase. So we would be opening all of this up. Anything that we, especially the market right now, I look at anything we can do, from billboards to sandwich boards. I'll stand on the corner, you know, and sell it. This is something that we believe in. We've been, I've been with Repligen for six years now. And it's reinvigorated me. It's got the juices flowing again. And I'm, you know, super excited about being here. As I said, Massachusetts, although I live in Rhode Island, I pay a hell of a lot of taxes.
You know, Hockington is a beautiful place to live. Put that out there for consideration.
I will put that on.
Awesome. Thank you very much. So Mr. Kamalo, do you need some promise?
Yeah, through the chair. Learning tonight that you'll be presenting your conversations with Hockington to the Capitol Committee, I respectfully request that the board formally vote to authorize the town manager and the legal teams to commence a TIF negotiation with Repligen.
Okay, so moved.
Second, could I ask a question in there? It doesn't interrupt the most. But could you, could you also share with us and the public sort of the timing? Would the town meeting vote hopefully come at annual town meeting? Or what is the predicted or hoped-for schedule?
I'm aggressive.
Yes, that's a very good question. We always tend to the applicant and request their specific timeline. Relate that to the state TIF approval process. And then determine whether there could be a need for a special town meeting. And we don't have those details yet.
Okay. It's just, it's nice for people to sort of hear that those kinds of things could be coming. That's very typical. That was my experience.
Appreciate that. I appreciate that.
You know, I was on the select board many years ago, and that was my experience then as well.
Well, any heads up always is good, and I agree. And really, we are aggressive, you know, if we get in. I want to hire now. As I said, we're recruiting in the area already for Marlboro, and we're ready to go.
Excellent. Anything else? Okay, so we have a motion that's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Good luck with him. There's a reason why we do hire. All right, moving on. Lake Maspinock Weed Management Control and Advisory Group. Select Board will hear an update from Lake Maspinock Weed Management and Control Advisory Group on the comprehensive, long-term lake management and vegetation control for strategy for Lake Maspinock.
Good evening. Through the chair. I'm joined this evening by Drew Logan, who is the Secretary of the Lake Maspinock Weed Management and Advisory Committee. And that is a five-member committee that supports the Director of Public Works and the town through management of the weeds in Lake Maspinock. There are four other members on that committee. Mr. Joe Baldiga, who is the Chair, Cynthia Estimer, Eric Sonnet, and Jeff Barnes. And we are also supported by a certified limnologist, David Mitchell. And without the support of those six folks, I would be lost with what to do with the weeds in the lake. So they are extremely valuable to me and to the town. So Drew is going to give you a state of the lake and give you an update on the conditions of the weeds in the lake.
Thank you, Mr. Westernling. I would address the Chair, but he just left. Board members, Mr. Town Manager, Ms. Town Manager, thanks for listening to us tonight. Just a quick update on our progress over the last five years. As Mr. Westernling stated, we were established by the Select Board five years ago to really advise, research, communicate with the community, take input on issues relating to management and monitoring of the lake weeds in Lake Maspinock, which have been problematic for some time. I believe we've achieved our charter of doing that. We've held over 70 public meetings, including several large forums of over 50 people that came out very early in the process where we took input, we communicated our progress. And ultimately, it culminated in a plan that was put together five years ago. That plan has subsequently been updated currently, which is while we're here. And you're certainly welcome to read that plan, but I'm going to give you the Cliff Notes version here over the next 10 minutes, which I think, if I were you, probably would appreciate. But it is available for you to read at your leisure. So I believe we have a presentation. Great. So just a couple of slides. What's in the 2021 plan? Over five years of lake surveys, one of the things we instituted at the advice of our consultant was to do consistent lake surveys in both the spring and the fall. That is based on 12 designated areas. We confirm those areas by GPS. So we're sampling the same areas repeatedly. And that gives us a great idea of the type of vegetation, as well as the density of the vegetation, both in the spring and the fall, which will kind of give us an idea of what we might need to do, if anything, the following year to take action to manage the weeds. Also in the plan is a lot of water quality testing. We work very closely with Lake Maspinock Preservation Association, which I'm also a member of. And you'd be happy to know that the lake quality is very good. We test for E. coli, phosphorus, nitrogen, dissolved oxygen. And one of the questions we always get is, what are we doing about watershed management? And is it the phosphorus levels that might be feeding these weeds? And the reality is, no. Those tests come back very, very low for all of those chemicals every time we've done the testing. So we believe the watershed education that we do with the lake residents is effective. We talk about utilizing phosphorus-free fertilizer, and the runoff does not appear to be contributing to the lake weeds. Most likely what contributes is that it's a very clear lake. It's very shallow. So the sun hits the weeds very easily, just like they would a weed in any area in your backyard. The third thing that's in the plan is the results of our winter lake drawdown. Mr. Westernling and his team, every year, let the lake down between three and five feet. That allows for maintenance of the dam. It also allows for lake residents to work on the seawalls and any surrounding area. But every three years, starting maybe 15 years ago, we've been able to do an extended drawdown. And that was with the approval of the Conservation Commission. And what the extended drawdown is intended to do is to get that lake level down to a target of eight feet and expose the weed bed to the freezing weather in the wintertime and freeze those weeds out. It can be a very effective technique. We've had some really good success with it. It can also be highly variable in its results. You have to make sure that you get down to the level that's targeted, so you can expose the weed bed. Number two, you have to get freezing temperature long enough to freeze the weeds. And number three, you got to make sure you don't have snow cover, because that actually insulates the ground. And so last year, for example, we got it down to the eight feet. We had some cold weather, albeit not as cold as we would have liked, and all indications that it didn't work. We've got a real problem again this year with the lake weeds, unfortunately. So we do need other treatment methodologies, and I'll go through that in just a second. We again identify and review any new management options, and also in the plan is revised management zones to focus attention on within the lake. So if we can go to the next slide, just a quick picture of some of the nuisance weeds in the lake. Fanwort is something that's been around for many, many years. It's an indigenous species. The large-leaf pond weed, also indigenous to this area, has really come on over the last 10 to 15 years. And variable milfoil, which is an invasive species, is also problematic in the lake. The density of this, again, varies from year to year, and we confirm that with the surveys. Recently, we've got a new weed called tape grass, which is kind of a spirally weed that we've seen be a little problematic. And it's just, it's been absolutely fascinating to me after having gone on many of these surveys, just to see the different types of vegetation that grows from year to year in the lake. A lot of which is very healthy. You want a good balance, but it is also problematic at times. So if we can go to the next slide, this is our summary of vegetation control options that are in the plan. Again, really, the bedrock of our lake management and treatment strategy is that extended drawdown. But again, for the reasons I cited earlier, we do need other options available to us. Herefore, the only thing that we've actually done to treat the weeds has been the drawdown. We haven't been successful in utilizing other options. To go through these quickly, after, again, a lot of research, these were the ones that we settled in on. Bentic barriers and hand harvesting. Bentic barriers is essentially a covering that you would put on the lake bottom. It's basically like a shield, if you will, to not allow the sunlight to get to the lake weeds. And that would be good for a small area, like around Sandy Beach, if we ever had problems there. That'd be one of our preferred methods for that area. And also, hand harvesting is another option that we think we could utilize. If any of the board would like to volunteer to pull weeds in the lake, we'd be happy to take your names down. For more moderate management intensity, we do have in the plan small-scale herbicide treatment. Again, this is not something we've been successful in deploying yet, but we do believe that that's an important element to keep in our plan. Spot treatments can be highly effective, and it's a very common method of weed control in many lakes around the Commonwealth. And that was verified through our research. And then finally, for a very high-management intensity, large-scale harvesting, which you'd be using almost a tractor to kind of harvest the weeds. And then large-scale herbicides, neither of which is most likely an approach that we would follow, but we did want to keep it in the plan if we ever needed to go there. So our preference would be to rely on the drawdown. And when the drawdown doesn't work, to have something as a backup in our disposable. Currently, the team, based upon the last few drawdowns that we've done, the small-scale herbicide treatment is something that we would like to have available to pursue at times when needed. So in summary, how are we doing on time? We should wrap it right up. That's hopefully 10 minutes. Again, we've got a comprehensive plan in place, again, available for anyone in the town to read. Again, our drawdown deep efforts can be very effective, but they're dependable year to year. We need to, again, have various options available to us, and they're really matched to the lake areas based upon the intensity of the weed infestation and recreational interest. We try to segment the lake into specific areas based upon what we were given as guidance as being of high interest to the community, and that is around Sandy Beach, where there's a lot of recreation, as well as areas where there are homes. And it doesn't make any sense to go and try to remove weeds from the middle of the lake when it's deep and they're not bothering anybody. That's a healthy balance. We do have money in the budget as part of the DPW. Every year, we look at it kind of like road salting. Some years, it may be needed to be used. Most years, it probably is not going to be completely used, but it's good to have there. And anything that's not used is returned to the town. And again, our five-year cycle allows us to adjust as needed, and we'll continue to update this plan as we learn more and get more experience. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. It's very helpful. Board members, do we have any questions or comments?
Just my main memory is when we had this at town meeting one year, people were very concerned about even the small use of pesticides. So just the more you can do to publicize if it's safe and what would be the potential consequence of using a herbicide, that would help put people at ease. The idea of it makes me nervous too, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, honestly, if you remember the history, that was why the group was formed. We came to town meeting, actually, after herbicides were approved by CONCOM. We were looking for funding, and there was a motion to actually study it some more. And so we formed this group, and we came back to the same conclusion, that it is something that we would like to have available. But we understand there are many people in town that feel differently, and it's one of those things that we probably just have to continue to over-communicate. And an update on safety, in fact, there are new herbicides available since our last plan that we did put into this year's management plan that has different safety profiles. So we'll continue to do that research.
Is the longer management plan in our pocket? I don't think I'm, I think I just saw the slideshow. Is it on the website, maybe?
Through the chair, I'm going to provide that to the board through the town manager.
Perfect, thank you.
Squibb?
Yeah, so one point of curiosity, and thank you for keeping Mr. Westernling out of the weeds, by the way. How much money do you have in the budget each year that you, so far, are turning back because we're relying on the drawdown so far?
Through the chair, it's an annual appropriation of $60,000. It has been for the past four or seven years. And the majority of that money is turned back to the general fund because largely, we're paying for the consultant, Dave Mitchell, his time, and any publications that we produce.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Fain?
I'm particularly worried about the milfoil. My son lives on a lake in New Hampshire, a Newfoundland lake, and they won't allow another boat from anywhere in New Hampshire on their lake because of milfoil. I guess it's just rampant up there. And it can do a lot of damage and destruction, and I see we have it in the lake. And I just wondered if you know what the best way for elimination of this is?
Yeah, through the chair, it's, it is effective, the drawdown is effective on milfoil. So we've seen.
Drawdown?
The long drawdown, yeah, that freezes the weed bed. The other thing that's happened with milfoil in our lake, at least, is that some of the indigenous species have actually crowded it out. So albeit it was a big problem in years past, it's still in the lake. But I would say, since I've been doing the surveys last 10 to 15 years, it has been not as prominent as some of the other species.
Good. I'm glad to hear it.
Yeah, so my concern would be the neighbors, the property owners on the lake. When they hear herbicide, you know, properly, I think that their radar goes up. You know, in the old days, they'd just be able to draw the lake down, call the Tennessee gas, and they'd drop a couple of 18-wheelers full of liquid nitrogen on there, and the weeds would be frozen, and you could do that in July. Obviously, we can't do stuff like that. But, you know, I think that was a very comprehensive report. And, you know, we are absolutely here. We want the best for the lake and for the lake owners.
Thank you.
One of the things I didn't see on the report was on the herbicides is the impact that it has on the fish, because I know there's a lot of people that eat the fish out of there.
Yeah, I would probably defer to our consultant on that. But everything that we researched, again, you're talking to a layperson here, is that you are putting such miniscule amounts into the lake that the risk to wildlife, humans, plant bed is, I won't say not existent, but very, very minimal. Certainly acceptable to the authorities, so.
Sure, thank you.
Just want to say thank you. I think it's important that the public sees that you have the various approaches depending on the impact. So I think that's really helpful. And, you know, it's unfortunate that all these lake drawdowns, we just have not been able to get cold enough. And that's been the past, what, five years? But I like the approach. I like the incremental approach, and I think you guys are doing a great job, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. We're fortunate that we have a lake that actually can be drawn down, that's not available in other communities, so.
Right, right, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, through the chair, I want to take this opportunity to to share how impressed I am with the performance of this team. We always say that our volunteer teams are our most valued players, and this project exemplifies that. Here's why. This is a team that came together to resolve a very complex issue tied to very deep science as well as strong emotions. They have, over the years, slowly but surely, come up with a solution that works within the means of this community. And most spectacularly, they have refined and institutionalized a process that is almost becoming a ritual for this community, something that we can repeat over time. So I see some common faces that I've seen over the years on this issue, and I'm touched by that. And I wanted to highlight that, again, this has been a fabulous performance by your team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Somebody want to?
Yeah?
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
My name is Jamie Gonzalez. I'm the President of the Lake Maspinock Preservation Association.
I'm the president of the Lake Massamanac Preservation Association, and I would like to support the CIG or the advisory group in their efforts to continue to work on the lake. I know there's a few of us here on the board that would like to continue with that process of being involved with the weeds and controlling the weeds. I would have to say that the weeds, at this point, are quite dense throughout the North Basin, and it's getting to be a problem. I think we have to take some serious action moving forward in the future and really look at the use of some other methods besides the drawdown. We had tried the extended drawdown this year, and it really wasn't effective as we had hoped. And I know we can't do it more than every three years, and we had an exemption to do it again this year from the Conservation Commission, but the extended drawdown does have a side effect on the actual biota in the lake itself. It does affect the fish populations and the other animals that are in the lake. So it's not a perfect solution in and of itself. It's good every three years as a balance, but to use that solely, have that as your sole tool, I don't think that's acceptable. And I worked with Drew and on the CIG for five years in the development of that plan, and I really think that that needs to be...there needs to be some sort of other...there needs to be another option that's acceptable to be used besides the drawdown.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jamie, I don't know how long you've lived on the lake, but one of the proposals I didn't see on there was Marco, let Marco go out there with an excavator.
I'm sure he would be all for that, but I don't think that would go over very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Come on up.
Michael Riley, 201 West Main Street. I live in the northern basin, and I can tell you that this weekend I did about 12 wheelbarrow full of weeds, mostly the new grassweed. As far as the population, actually, they've shown that there's so much weeds, it can actually hinder the fish population because it doesn't allow the normal breeding grounds that they allow to have. So I know they haven't been...and as far as the herbicide, my only comment is, over the last year and a half, we've seen a lot of fighting against science, and it was a lot of things that are supported by science. People actually are concerned about the herbicides. I'd ask them what chemicals that they use in their households, and then I'd ask them to do the research that these types of extensive showing for 30 years on the lakes with no harmful effects. So it's...you can choose to believe or, you know, whatever somebody tells you, like we've done recently with the COVID, with the vaccine. But there's science doesn't back it up, so if people are interested in science, all the information is on the website, and it is a harmless chemical. Thank you.
Thank you.
So to add on that, when I...in my occupation, when people say that they're not going to take the vaccine because they don't know what's in it, I ask them if they've eaten a hot dog recently. If they ate a hot dog, they should get a vaccine. So I agree with you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kama, if they wanted to escalate the treatment of weeds, is there a process for that?
No, I think the process that the team has put in place appears to work. Moments when they felt that other options could be employed, they found to develop a public process for that consultation process and then make a recommendation to the select board.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. All right, moving on. Draft changes to the town precinct map. The select board will hear an update from Connor Deegan, the town clerk. A draft changes to the town's precinct boundaries based on preliminary population estimates. Final map will be prepared for approval when the 2020 census, United States Census population data is released. Mr. Deegan?
Thanks for having me up again. So this is a process that obviously takes a while. It's actually taken a lot longer this year than usual. If anyone's noticed, we've had quite a bit of growth in the last 10 years. So I think that Ben has a slide that he can put up for the draft map that was proposed by the secretary's office. We have our own kind of little subgroup of town staff that works with them, meets in private meetings with the secretary's team in order to kind of figure out how to best create this map to fit Hopkinton. This was kind of the initial draft that they gave us, where they looked at kind of where the explosive growth was, where, if you can see, there's bold lines on there that show where the existing precinct lines are. So obviously, we had explosive growth in precinct one, and that's what pushed us over the limit, along with the growth in precinct three. So both of those kind of got split and re-carved a little bit. But the goal with this is we'll hopefully be able to get all of these precincts to stay under the 4,000 resident cap. It's pretty close, and this is...these are very preliminary numbers, but it's a...so the current estimate's 18,961. If that number goes up a little bit more, we might be looking at adding a sixth precinct rather than just having the draft of five. So this is really...there's nothing to vote on tonight. This is really just a chance to get this in front of you. Probably within the next couple of weeks to months, you're going to see a finalized map come up, but this gives a chance that, while we are working closely with the secretary's office, if you...any of you have any questions going forward, don't hesitate to reach out to myself or to Elaine, who's working very closely with us on that, so that we can kind of address if there's any potential issues or risks that you see with the current status of the map, and we can address it before it comes down to kind of the hard deadline for us to get a vote done.
Board members, any...
Yeah, I was curious if having a fifth or sixth precinct would require us to have more than one polling location, or is that a choice that we would have?
So we have a choice with that. Having a fifth precinct would potentially allow us to continue using our single location, which currently would be ideal because it avoids the confusion of, you don't have to tell someone, "You're in the wrong precinct. Go to the spot across town," versus you can say, "Oh, just go to that line over there, and you're good to go." We were told that we could optionally go for a sixth precinct to try and cover the fact that we will likely have to re-precinct again in another 10 years, and that would keep us from having to go through the process again. However, I think that it might be beneficial to have us look at five, which would be manageable if we can keep it to five, and then we can kind of manage it with the resources we have, versus if we go straight up to six, then we're going to have to start looking at multiple polling locations, precincts, getting potentially their own location, and trying to figure out, can we do that in town-owned buildings? Do we need to rent space? So there's a whole lot of other factors that come into play.
The other question would be about redistricting. Is it possible our state representation might change just because of the population increase?
It's possible.
Yeah.
So what'll end up happening, kind of the next steps, are once we have all the final numbers and we work on a final map with the secretary's office, we will then be able to complete, have you folks vote on this map and finalize it. I will then submit it to the legislature, and once they have a compiled map of all of the precincts, that's when they will begin the redistricting discussions. And they will try to figure out, you know, based on the populations, how are they going to carve things up? What's going to stay the same? Where has there been explosive growth that might be split into multiple districts? So it's entirely possible that we could get split up, but it's hard to tell for certain right now until they start looking at that process.
So that'll be next year?
It will be either late this year or early next year, most likely.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
I don't have any questions, but this is pretty exciting news, an additional precinct. And I guess, and I just said I didn't have any questions, but I know that the schools are pretty strapped for space, too, and they have some concerns. I don't even know where we would have different polling locations if that was the case. Do you have thoughts, or...
I mean, we...it would pretty much be...any schools would be a useful one, but realistically, when you're going to have a polling location that has one or two precincts in it, you really need to place that either centralized to both precincts or within the precinct if it's only a single precinct. So that's the other piece that makes it complicated, is where do we put these based on where the precincts are? Because the precincts are drawn based on, you know, we don't want to, you know, separate any, you know, population groups, and we don't want to make...like to marginalize any one in the group. We don't want to create blocks necessarily either. It's to just keep it as even keel as possible. So it's not really considered of, you know, where are we going to put additional locations? So that would be something that, again, if we have...if we just are able to do five, we don't necessarily need to worry about it yet. We can squeeze a fifth set of tables into the brown gym, but it would be if we move up to six, and in the next 10 years, when we most certainly go up to six, we will have to have kind of a consideration for what we're going to do for space, if we're going to continue to find a way to do a centralized location, what that looks like, and kind of what those steps would be if we're going to move to multiple locations.
Doyle Gym and Brown Gym.
Just go down the hall, you'll be good.
Downstairs.
Mr. Freddie?
We do not have municipal buildings in every precinct, which we could use. We don't.
That's correct.
Good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Good.
All the way to now.
Are you good? Thank you. Connor, this is very helpful, and the explanations are also very helpful for us all to understand.
Happy to help. And as I said, if you have any questions going forward on it, please reach out to me. If you have anything that stands out to you on the maps or anything leading up to it, please let me know, and while you can talk it through, and I can bring it up at the next meetings going forward as well.
Sounds good. Moving on, our next agenda item is a public request for no left turns at Cumberland Farms. That's at 91 West Main Street. The board will consider a second request from Darlene Hayes to prohibit left turns out of the driveways at Cumberland Farms, West Main Street eastbound to prevent accidents. Mr. Kamalu?
Yes, through the chair. In your packet, we included a listing of various materials that cover this topic. It's a topic that Mrs. Hayes has brought to the town's attention several times. What you'll glean from the materials provided is that this is a conversation that would require us to follow the following principles. Number one, that public safety is our primary concern. It's something that we take very seriously in town, and if there are public safety issues that are raised by this issue, it's something that requires our attention. Secondly, that we honor the principle of respecting all the stakeholders that are involved in this case, the residents of the town, the town departments that work on this issue, mass DOT who are somewhat involved because they own a button property and should be part of the solution, and obviously, the business owner, Cumberland Farms. And thus, with that in mind, my suggestion or recommendation to the board is that, one, you authorize us to continue to evaluate, especially considering that there are some measures that were taken recently, evaluate how those are working, as well as take into account any other new information that the town may have now in defining a solution for this. However, it tends to be said that, as a town, we do not have an established process for handling these issues, and I think that's why we have to go through this protracted stakeholder negotiation process. Our opportunities to define measures that have been discussed as possible solutions to this issue usually come through our formal, regular plan review process. The proponent has not presented the plan here. This is a situation where I think we need to find a way to engage with the property owner, seek input from the public, and hopefully come up with a good evaluation of what's working, given the adjustments that have been made, and also an evaluation of the other options that have come to light since the last option was implemented.
So I think it's important to note here that the reason why we can't just do something right now is because it's an existing business, and it's their private property, and that's why we need to negotiate with them. There's no permit before us where we can impose conditions, correct?
Yes, and here's the reason. The existing business was permitted with specific conditions and performance requirements. To my understanding, based on our review so far, they have complied with those expectations. What we're learning since the business made those adjustments is that there are some public safety issues that have continued to be of concern to the community. We have used different ways to measure those concerns. We have also received public input, and thus, with that in mind, it is incumbent upon us as a permitting authority to have a very open and voluntary conversation with the business owner.
Okay. So do you need anything from us as board members to...as a board to authorize the negotiations?
I think it's the consensus view of the board. If the board wants us to follow and evaluate what has been implemented so far, consider any other options that have been brought to light since the last adjustments were made, we are available to do that.
Mr. Kamalu, would it be fair to say that the town has created this problem? Like, when Cumberland Farms started their work there, there was not a left turn lane. Therefore, there was one lane of traffic. I would...the gist of the accidents are coming out, and I've seen a couple, as they're taking a left. It's because there's a left-hand turn. That's blind, and the town has created that. So it's unfortunate that we would put this back, you know, put this back onto the business who's done everything that they want, that they're supposed to do, whereas the town created the hardship for them. I would think it would leave us susceptible to a lawsuit if they were not in agreement with our proposals.
If the decision by the town is to implement something unilaterally, that could be the case. I think what we consider here is the town owns the right-of-way.
We're not talking to the public right now.
Yeah, but I think she's right. That's not correct.
Yeah. We will rely on Elaine and Chief Bennett. They have more history. I wasn't here when that project went forward, but just specifically, in terms of our...in terms of our runway, the town controls the right-of-way, and then there's private property that upsets the private way. For any solution to work, the two need to work together. That's where I'm coming from.
I don't know.
Board members, any questions or discussion? Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I'm just going to...the two left-hand turns down the road from Dynasty and from my doctor's office and further down, they all say, "Left-hand, right-hand turn only" coming out of those driveways, and they have other ways of doing it. I mean, I know there's another intersection, there's a same way in town. When you go to make a left-hand turn, you have to cross two lanes of traffic. And I've held my breath a number of times at both places, and we have had enough accidents that, you know, I just...I'm looking at public safety, and even the employees at Cumberland Farms have said that they have seen a number of accidents, and that they are...almost all the serious accidents and crashes involve drivers making a left-hand turn out of their driveway. I am just totally into public safety here, and we have to do something about it. Signage, put one of those things that says 20 miles an hour, flash, 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 just beyond Cumberland Farms, because I know some of it, not all of it, but some of it is coming from people coming off 195, and it takes a while when you come off a highway and you're going at a certain speed to come off and slow right down, and that's a problem. I think that... I, I think that, uh, we, the other problem we have could be fixed too, because, uh, if we had no left-hand turn, there's another way out of, of that parking lot, and we just don't seem to do it. Businesses, I can understand them not liking it, but I'm, I'm more concerned with life and, uh, and the crashes than, than, than I am, because they're still going to get their business. I think they'll still get their business, no matter what we do.
To play devil's advocate?
Yeah, you can play.
The devil's, uh, but the Dynasty does have a left-hand turn out of their parking lot.
Not, not the far one.
No. But, but if we, if, if...
I mean, it's, that's on Lumber Street, their turn.
But then they, they take a right and a left.
But you're not crossing two lines of traffic. You can take your right and, and then the left. It's not the same traffic that you're getting on West Main Street either by, by any stretch of the imagination.
But we don't have, they don't have that option to do that out of, out of Cumberland Farms.
No.
But again, it's, Mr. Kamalu, we, we have to figure out...
We have to figure out something.
We need to figure out a solution, because there is, literally the day that the email came in, say, making this request, they went to Cumberland Farms and witnessed an accident. And it was bad. And it was the exact same thing. And it's also always because of the, the, the people being courteous, saying, oh, yes, come on out, and then bam, they get hit on the other lane.
The other side, the other way.
We do need to figure this thing out and, um, you know, I thank Ms., Ms. Hayes for bringing this to the board's attention, and, um, I think we need to, we need to find a solution. Uh, sorry. I didn't give anyone else a chance to talk here.
That's okay. I'm patiently waiting and I was...
All right, you're, uh...
Um, so, a couple of things. Um, I, I appreciate all this history. It was almost too much, honestly. There used to be a no-left-turn sign there. It got knocked down and never replaced. So I don't know the history, but there used to be when it first opened with that, that, maybe Mrs. Lazarus could, could tell us.
So the, the safety of Cumberland Farms, the plan would require a no-left turn of the westernmost. So if the sign is gone, should it be replaced?
Well, if that's the case, then they're, they're out of compliance with...
But that's the western side, the westernmost side. So that's, that's only a one-way. You can't drive out of there at all.
Now it's a one-way and a one-way out.
The eastern, the eastern side is the one that, that Darlene is talking about, is the eastern accident.
Should we put the diagram on the screen? That might be helpful, but...
I know it's, it's not open, but it was the eastern side that used to also be just exit only.
Could you please come, come, sit up here so we can hear?
So it was the eastern side that actually used to be just exit only, and now they allow people in and out, which is also causing, so someone's coming in and then someone's trying to leave, taking a left. So not only are they trying to get around the person right next to them, they're trying to get around that first lane of traffic, and then they can't see it. So, yeah, if, my son was the seventh, 18th or 19th accident chiefly said. It was my kid. He got hit really bad. Since then, there's been oodles. We're up to over two dozen accidents there, and this is less than two years.
Yeah.
Um, I'm gonna keep pushing because there was a sign not to take a left there at one point. Across the street is, is town property, the easement is town property. Dynasty has a no-left, Starbucks has a no-left, and yes, there was always a left-hand, and the left-hand turn lane got extended since Cumberland Farms was there, but it has been there for decades. It just got extended in length. And now you're looking at a huge second gas station compound going across the street. Um, there's gotta just be something, that's gotta be better for public safety. That is a hu- I mean, my son was 22 when he had the accident, he's about to turn 25 in a few months, but that is a huge hangout for kids under 18 driving. They come in, they get their snacks, they get gas, they run around, they, they cut over to Starbucks. That is an accident for under 21s waiting to happen big time, and a couple of them have been very bad accidents, under 21-year-olds. I mean, um, these are where kids can, you know, they're on senior break for lunch, they cut over there, they get gas, they get a ton of food, they hang out, they're not paying attention, they're looking, oh my God, I have to get back. That, that's the biggest safety. It's, um, other places have no left turns, there are parts as you exit that are public property. The easement is owned by the town. There used to be a sign that there was no e- no, it was an exit only and no entrance. Now they're allowing both in. We know that there was a major accident even on their property and why there, wasn't the person who drove through their front windshield. And she had come in that exit only, lost control and went through, and that's why those barriers are in front of Cumberland Farms.
If, if it was in the...
I mean, that's the, I mean, the history of it has had issues now going, probably almost since conception.
I think I, I remember that accident.
It was a bad accident.
That was the one she drove through the...
She drove right through the front window of Cumberland Farms, but she came in that eastbound.
Easternmost.
Yeah, the easternmost, which, at that point, it actually said exit only. So wherever the sign went was gone.
Yeah.
But now people are coming in and out. So she came in that way, lost control, because there was actually a car coming out, she smashed through it, and that's why they put those barriers up.
So I, I could, I would agree that I think it is a big safety issue and that, um, that we need to pursue whatever we can do, and maybe we're limited to, to improve safety there. I'm picturing the Wendy's in Melford where they put up those, um, I don't know if that's at all possible, that, what, their flexible barriers?
Like, like flexible Jersey bears.
Yeah.
Weirdly, as I was at some multi-chamber event before coming here, and I was with Scott Richardson, and said, oh, I'm heading here, and he goes, ma- maybe remind them at one point in time, when they decided to put all those additional businesses there and with the new gas station, that that actually had, that intersection at one point had a proposal to be a roundabout. And that would be a lot safer way to, like, get all the traffic around. That's a huge investment and change, but he goes...
A rotary?
Oh, boy.
Yeah, roundabout, yeah.
Oh, boy.
But that, that intersection was meant to have, when they, when the whole Starbucks and the expansion on one Lumber Street happened, one of the proposals was that have a roundabout there. And so that would actually eliminate a lot of this anyhow, but I'm gonna hold my breath on that, but...
So, uh, Ms. Lazarus, if you're saying that the site plan originally required that no-left turn there, um, isn't this as simple as calling the zoning enforcement officer and saying, go enforce this?
Just the one, the one...
It's the westernmost.
It's the westernmost, though. Okay.
Which is only one way now.
Which is one way anyway, so, okay.
People take left now, that's fine too.
Yeah, people text and drive too, and they shouldn't.
Right.
Oh, there's all kinds of things. I have, I have some other questions. So we have focused on, um, the Cumberland Farms, and I see the police chief here, and I hate to throw you into the, the mix, but, um, I would like to know from a safety standpoint how, you know, what, what the experience is more objectively from the public safety viewpoint. But what is the process? Like, I know that we can't just stomp onto private property and unilaterally make, um, make demands, but what, what is the process? And it's not just for cumbees. I mean, I will be honest with you, and I, I half joked, but I was very serious when Alltown came before the planning board, I choose my gas depending on which direction I'm driving. I'm not crossing that intersection, not for anything. Uh, but, um, so what is the process, not just there, but anywhere along a major strip where circumstances have changed and we're, we're experiencing, um, safety concerns?
The answer is that the town does not have a process.
So that's, that's the gap.
Exactly. That's the answer.
That's the catch here. That's why we're talking about it now.
So that, that is something definitely that I'd be enthusiastic about working on, because I think that there are solutions that are certainly respectful of, uh, private property owners and businesses. We don't, you know, we want to make sure we're doing that, but safety is, you know, is the number one concern.
Great.
So do we, do we need to vote?
Like I said, that, that is the only one.
I don't think we need to vote. Do we need...
No, there's no, I, I believe we understand the consensus.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. So it is getting late, so I want to keep things moving along. Um, the next item on our agenda is a, an update from the police chief. Bill Bennett will join the board to discuss staffing plans for the police department. Chief Bennett, welcome to the hot seat.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Through the chair, I'd like to thank, um, everybody for carving out some time, especially at this late hour to meet with me. I haven't had the opportunity to meet with the board and talk about the department at any great length since assuming the role of chief, and, uh, I had two topics I wanted to talk about tonight. I think the first one is really important, uh, and that's to kind of take a moment and review my observations and where, where I feel we are as we move forward. Having sat in the chair now for 15 months, and, uh, I'm proud to say that having watched the department go through, uh, since last April and all the challenges that we faced, that our mission, vision, values and goals are in line, and that our five-year strategic plan is, is still steering the course for us, and, uh, I don't feel that, uh, there's any, any reason to deviate from that. That vision was put together through a consensus of the community, uh, in partnership with boards and committees and department heads, and, uh, after, uh, as my term as ch- chief, the plan was developed, uh, I was part of developing the plan, as were many other people in the community. Uh, I feel that plan is on course. Second thing I'm here to talk about is staffing. We, as we all know, we, last July, we, uh, I was pleased to see that we lifted the, the hiring ban. I am sitting on some command, executive command staff, an executive command staff position that, uh, held off on implementing that promotion, the vacancy of deputy chief created by my, uh, becoming chief, and, uh, I'm here tonight to, to, uh, talk to the board about moving forward and, and rebuilding the department. I recognize the board took some, uh, some efforts right in the beginning to protect the human assets of the entire town, and to me, that showed the value that, uh, you all place. And tonight, we celebrated bringing onboarding a lot of new people and the promotion of a new fire chief, and, uh, this community has always expressed a, a value of the people that work here through my, my time here, through every financial crisis, repeatedly has shown that they value the assets, the human assets of the employees, and, uh, and I, and I'm grateful for that. I, the last thing a new chief wants to do is be, face layoffs or furloughs and, and those hard things, so I, I fully understood why the, the steps you took were necessary. Moving forward, I'd like, I, I'm working with, uh, the human resource department and the town manager to, uh, to begin the process of, of replacing the deputy chief and the cascading, any cascading promotions that happen as we move through that process. These processes are all funded, uh, and approved at, um, they have been approved by the board in the past, as well as funded through town meeting. So I just wanted to get before you tonight to address any concerns, as, it is my hopeful intention to come before you repeatedly as we move forward with new candidates for, for various positions. And, uh, that's it. Just to say, uh, looking for your support as we move forward.
You certainly have our support. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hand it over, um, to the board and see if we have any comments or questions.
I think I do at this time.
Okay. Ms. Carter?
So, um, uh, I'm delighted to have you here, I'm delighted to have this opportunity. Um, I have, um, I just, uh, it's a philosophical question about how we, um, at all levels, how we ensure that we are really, um, pursuing, you know, diversity and inclusion in candidates and so forth. And I just, I put that out there before there is a candidate in front of us, because I think it is, it's an important conversation to have, um, that I, I think shouldn't, shouldn't sort of cloud people's enthusiasm for particular candidates when they're in front of us, right? But, but the process and the, the larger goals of, um, really bringing, uh, bringing an openness to diversity, especially in leadership roles, is a really key, um, focus, I think, not just for me, but for a lot of us. And I just, um, curious about your thoughts. I don't want to put, I really don't want to put you on the spot. I don't.
Okay.
But I do want to start having those conversations and not just with you, um, with, with a lot of departments.
Sure. I mean, a quick response would be to that is, uh, I'm proud to work, have worked with Director Casey on her efforts, uh, as the human resource department leads that effort of, of seeking a more diverse candidate pool, um, and ensuring that all of our processes, um, are the best they can be, top to bottom, from even selection of questions and how those questions are asked and, and educating panelists on how follow-up questions are asked. Recently, Director Casey implemented a blind resume process as we went forward for police officer positions. So we did, they didn't even disclose what colleges they went to or what high schools till the very end. And, uh, and that's, you know, that's different for people who've sat on 10 panels, and she was very eloquent in explaining the, the value to that. So town-wide, I think we're, we're, we're working hard, all of us, department heads, and through the guidance of Mr. Kamalu and Director Casey to, to ensure that, um, in my industry, let's face it, it's hard to hi- find police officers right now. It's very hard. The recruitment is very low. New candidates are very low, at epic all-time lows. Police officers are retiring, leaving and leaving the, to field entirely. Um, it, it, it's, it's a difficult market out there. I know that, um, the gentleman from, uh, expressed that earlier, and, and I think if you looked at industries, we're probably one of the most struggling industries. So, you know, what do we need to do? I think we need to create a good workplace for people, where people feel, um, you know, the key things, welcome, have a mission, be valued, value what the organization is doing, and I think we do that here. I, I really do. Where you, many of you must have met some of the younger officers, and they're thrilled to serve in this community. But make no mistake, they're very marketable. They're very marketable, and we need to create an environment, a workplace for them that, that they all know they can thrive, regardless of any, anything, uh, that they can thrive here, that they're, they're welcome and they're supported. So, uh, absolutely, I think that has to be part of every conversation for recruitment, promotion and retention. Thank you.
Ms. Carter?
You're up.
I don't really have anything. I read your letter and I saw the advertisement for patrolmen already, and, uh, we now have to fill your former position, so I, I know there's a lot to be done right now, and, and I'd like to give you permission to do it.
Thank you.
Ms. Carter?
Through the chair.
Yeah, so, uh, chief, I know through, um, through working with you, uh, you ran through the pandemic effectively. You did a wonderful job keeping our community safe, working with Chief Slaman and the board of health and, and all involved. Uh, I know that you did it short ha- short stand, I'm sorry, short-staffed. Um, the deputy chief left their position to take the chief job. Uh, there was no backfilling, um, and I know that your senior management team was you for a long time. Uh, I know that, and it's not lost. You did a great job. I'm glad that you're here before us, asking to fill that position. Uh, I totally am 100% in support of filling the deputy, backfilling the lieutenant, uh, or if the lieutenant is the one that's promoted, or, you know, just filling the, the, the levels of hierarchy that need to, to be in place, to have, to, to have us continue to be our, uh, you know, the safest community around. So you have my, uh, undying support.
Thank you.
And your officers should know they have my undying support. I, I can't speak for the whole board, but I totally 100% back you guys. You guys are doing an awesome job in such turbulent times, uh, in your industry. You guys are doing it with a smile. Every time I come across someone, um, and it's not just me personally coming across, it's my friends saying, hey, I had an interaction with this guy, he was great. Uh, my kid at Parks and Rec camp last week, uh, had San Keone up there doing the, the dog stuff, absolutely impressive, and just, you know, got down on her knee and, and just had discussions eye to eye with these kids and making it so cops aren't vilified, cops are, are good people. Um, you know, every industry has a couple of bad ones, not in Hopkine. Uh, so you have my undying support.
Thank you.
So I don't have a, a whole lot to add. I mean, I think there's been, been a lot said here, um, but pandemic caused a hiring freeze and, you know, there's a lot of, uh, growth that needed to occur and hasn't occurred. So you definitely have my support in, uh, coming back here and, um, and rebuilding the, the department and, and backfilling and, and filling.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I really appreciated Muriel's questions, uh, because I couldn't formulate my own, but, um, I really appreciate hearing about the new blind, um, the blind hiring process where you look at the resumes with, um, with identifying info and even colleges blacked out. Because I really think, you know, we all have that unconscious bias. You see a really famous college on there and you're gonna think that candidate's better, but maybe someone else just couldn't afford to go to that college, but they're just as good of a police officer, so, um, anyway, so I appreciate that you guys are looking into that, those sort of methods, and I know the job market is really tight right now. It's, uh, people are retiring and people, not enough people, new people coming up. But, um, good opportunities for students graduating high school and college now to, to join the workforce.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. Town manager report.
Sure, I have to run. I have a...
Okay. Town manager report.
Sure, I have to run. I have a work thing. All right. Thanks.
I'm just kidding.
I don't know, do they stay through enough innings? I don't know if it's a game.
Sorry?
I don't know if it's a full game. He may not, he may have a.
Why don't I come back and tomorrow?
Tomorrow? Okay, great. Thank you. Um, town manager's report. In terms of the Main Street corridor project, um, we did share the detailed update. And I wanted to draw your attention to the section that now outlines the community contacts. Our goal there is to communicate what is it that we're hearing from residents regarding the construction project. So if you have any feedback on that, let us know. I also wanted to draw your attention to the, the pink markings that you see on the street, on Main Street, along Main Street. Those are the locations of the main electrical culverts. That is how big they're going to be. And as you can tell, in some sections along Main Street, they impact both lanes. And so the ongoing conversation right now is between public safety, engineering department, Mass DOT and the contractors regarding any detailed plans. No decisions have been made yet. Metro West Veterans Services District, I am delighted to share with the community that, uh, the partnership between Medway, Hopkinton, Ashland and Hollyston continues to, uh, bear significant benefits for veterans. And this has been recognized by the state, extending the district for another three years. Uh, we're going to continue the partnership until August twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four. And then in terms of releasing executive session minutes, uh, there are two sets of minutes that we are poised to release. Five nineteen, twenty, Reducting Union Negotiations. And then eight thirteen nineteen, we see, will be released completely.
Okay, do you need us to vote on that or anything?
We simply make the announcement.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, liaison reports.
I am curious, being the budget advisory group liaison, I'm, that's new to me. Um, since it's obviously new to me because I'm new to the board, but it wasn't in place before, when I served before. So I'm curious about the timing and who's on that and when to expect that to start up.
Yeah, um, in, in fact, at staff level, we've already started the meetings, uh, involving, uh, town staff and our colleagues, uh, in the school district. Uh, we are hoping to start the budget advisory meetings sooner rather than later. Um, I have a conversation that I'd like to have with the chair regarding perhaps first having a meeting of the select board so that at least we can talk about the main events in the coming year. And, uh, that in itself will include the, the budget calendar.
Great. Um, and then, you know, in, in the spirit of us not doing liaison reports last time, but good news, um, I did notice that we have three new Eagle Scouts from Troop One that we were notified about. Um, so, so preliminary congratulations to Noah Sean Horn, Ryan Deleva and Daniel Deleva. Um, but I know that they've asked for somebody to come if they're available on August twenty-second, so I wanted to make sure we didn't miss that.
I'm definitely going to go because I know all three scouts from my time at Troop One, but there's more than one of us can go to.
Yeah, absolutely. As many as we can.
And additionally, one scout asked for the proclamation, but I assume we do it for all scouts if we know about them or do we?
Typically, they'll come here.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
And Noah will be going off to college in the fall, so, well, he might already be gone in September, but, um, or he could join on Zoom though, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Look at that. Um, and then the only other, um, uh, question I had, um, was about, um, Board of Health updates as I'm over here coughing, dry throat, sorry about that. Um, uh, more, more.
Future agenda items?
More regularly, now that we're sort of aim, you know, we're heading into sort of a different season. I don't wanna be, um, be overly worried, but I do think that the community is gonna be concerned and, and the Board of Health, I think, is gonna be invested in making sure we stay more publicly updated. Um, they've been doing a great job, so no criticism at all. I just wonder.
That makes sense. It's a future, um, agenda item.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
To bring that back, I think if, if we can consult with Sean.
Yeah, in, in, in fact, um, we held our Hopkinton Emergency Management Group last Wednesday. Um, we will be resuming the community updates and as part of that, Sean will be coming before the select board.
Excellent.
Actually, I was gonna bring up the Eagle Scout thing.
Okay, all right.
So I think that's covered.
All right, any agenda items?
No.
I do. Uh, the Green Committee, uh, Sustainable Green Committee is having another big day. Uh, they're planning once, uh, September twenty-fifth at nine AM to noon, meeting at the Carmen to do a downtown cleanup of everything before the marathon. So they sent me copies of their, what they're sending out. And, uh, I don't know how this is gonna work with the downtown project, cleaning up.
I was gonna say, maybe. How about we just bury it all?
Yeah. But, uh, that's what they're doing. They have another big project going and, and I'm really happy, happy to see how well they're doing. They've got some long-term projects too that they're, they're talking about doing. Uh, been to the senior center and it's now open and functioning even for lunches for people. So, uh, they're back in business. Uh, it is recommended that you wear a mask and, uh, I think that that's a very good idea. I did hear something and I wanted to ask, uh, Norman or people about it because I'm, I do the marathon committee, but I heard that people who got numbers from us are having a real hard time raising the money in time.
Hmm.
And that there may be some numbers returned or something?
I, I've heard similar. I've heard the same thing.
You've heard the same thing. Good. So I just wanted to find out if we should extend the deadline for raising the money or is there something we can do about this?
Or is it up to the BIA?
Yes, the, I'm hearing a couple of things. The, the issue about the deadline for raising money is driven by the deadline that is set by the BIA for us, the receiving towns, to report to the BIA.
It was a short deadline this year because of the.
Y- yes.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying is can we.
Um, we can, we can reach out to the, we, for your information, for the public's information. We have not received this report in the office.
Okay.
Yes, the, the, the second issue is what we have, what, what we had leading to the deadline for registering the runners, namely that some entities were having difficulty finding runners. Uh, I think in our case, all but one entity. I, I'll check in the office and send you an email. I think everybody was able to find a runner except for one entity. We reached out to the BIA, Vasuda reached out to the BIA as well as reaching out to the, um, specific organization. Now, goal was if, if they were having difficulty finding a runner, are there, are there other entities in town that have runners that are looking for entries? Uh, we were not able to secure that.
Okay.
Yes.
That's.
But let's, we.
Close that up a little bit.
All right. And I have nothing.
So I have a couple of agenda items or, or thoughts too. Um, we did also receive, um, and I don't remember from who, but a, but a question about center lines on roads. And I thought that part of the safety discussion, we could, you know, we could include that in the discussion with, with DPW and public safety and so forth. I do know that as part of the Growth Study Committee, um, Jane Moran, who is, is a former police chief herself, um, was very adamant about the safety features of center lines and sidelines. Not being an expert myself, it did spur me to think that that was worth, um, adding into that, that conversation with public safety and with DPW for future consideration.
Sure.
And the only other thing, um, that I would like to pose that we think about is the discussion about the, about the, you know, the hiring or the recruitment process from a DEI standpoint, hopefully separate from any particular department or any particular hire, but sort of the more, the more, um, philosophical conversation about our process and our, our system. I'm really excited to hear that Mrs. Casey has, um, put in some really exciting advancements in the process. Um, but I did notice tonight, she said that, for example, the charter is silent on, on the process. And it's something for us to think about.
I think that's a great idea. Um, and maybe to, you know, kind of flush it out a bit more and with Maria as to, as to how we're going about things.
Yeah.
All right. You look as though you have something to say.
No, I, I think the basic information is to repeat, I think, what I've shared in public. In fact, uh, the HR department is doing a great deal of work on diversity and inclusion. Um, that's one of Maria's goals this year. Uh, and she's done a fantastic job compiling resources and setting out a plan of action at staff level for that piece. And one of the observations from the staff discussions is yes, the charter preamble talks about all residents. However, it doesn't address employees.
Mm-hmm. So I would, I would just love to have that sort of bigger conversation and also celebrate the work that Mrs. Casey and the department is doing. It's wonderful.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree more. Well, Ms. Leonard?
Ready for, uh.
Ready for the, I'm ready for the motion.
To adjourn.
So moved.
For second.
All right, we have a motion. It's seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. Good night, everyone.